The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the consent items. We have the approval of the minutes from July 17th, regular board meeting, as well as the study session, July 24th, regular meeting, August 10th, regular session, and the August 10th, study session. Did anyone find any corrections or points of note that they needed to make out of any of those? If anyone objected, approve these altogether? And in the public, have any comments about any of those? No, I'll take a motion.
So moved. I'll say.
Moved by Kyle. Second by Stephen. All in favor, raise your right hand. Minutes approved. Four zero. Okay, we'll move to the financial report. Todd, did you want to go run through these?
Sure.
I'm just taking a deep breath after supering anything. In the education fund, at the end of July, or for July, we had receipts of $1,026,596.22, and expenses of $1,034,422.09. Our cash balance at the end of July is $931,851.49. Debt service in July, we had revenue of $7,048.72. There were no expenditures. The ending balance at the end of July is $1,167,997.57. And in the operations fund, we had receipts of $82,377.11, expenses of $250,512.36, and our cash balance at the end of July in the operations fund is $1,012,267.35.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? We had, if it's okay with you guys, I'll just scroll through the claims and we'll approve all three. We had approval of claims for $1,899,163.31. Were there any questions or concerns on the claims? And then we have approval of payroll for July 28th and August 11th, totaling $757,090.34. Were there any questions or concerns about the payroll?
No.
Any thoughts from the public about either of those claims or payroll? If not, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Stephen.
Second.
Second by Ethan. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero. I mark.
Good evening.
Okay, we will move on to the second reading of the policies. And I'll just scroll through the list, and then if there's any questions or comments at the end, we can go that way. So we have bylaws, bylaws 0141, 0142, 0142.1, 0142.2, 0142.3, 0144.1, 0144.2, 0152. And then we have policies, 1213.01, 1425, 1615, 2410, 2461, 2462, 3124, 3213.01, 3215, 3231, 3362.01, 3425, 4213.01, 4215, 5512, 5517, 5517.01, 5771, 6250, 6700, 7434, 7540.02, 8310, and 8451. Any thoughts, questions, or comments on those? Yes ma'am?
What does that tell us? I mean, where can I go to find out what these are?
On the website.
And so it, I went on the website today, and I looked on the agenda, and I looked at their policies and things. So if I go back and I look at all of these, they're going to describe what all of these are so that I'll know if we want them for our school system? Is that the idea of that? Hmm.
They're listed in there as far as some are, the majority of these are changing, what was it? Changing the word? It was changing like must to shall. Must to shall, and, or like an IC code changes, and so the number changes. And matter of fact, all of these were in the packet from Neola, telling us this changed, this needs to be updated, the law changed, we need to update this. I don't think there's a single one of these that we brought to the table ourselves and said, "We need to change this policy for the school district."
No.
You know?
Well, I started figuring that, but, okay.
In reference to finding them, if you get to the Board Docs page and you see that Policies tab in the top right, when you click there, the numbers that are associated with the policy on the, that Policy's top right, the tab up there, or next to Agenda and Meetings, if you click, yeah, if you click on that, all these numbers that are associated with the attachments show where they are in the Policies page. So you can kind of navigate there. So all the bylaws start with zero because they're from the Bylaws section, which says 000.
Will this particular page be there so I can check the ones that you're discussing tonight?
Yes, the Policies page, yeah, that's publicly accessible, yeah.
And that's what the attachments are. Click on the attachment, it actually gives you the verbiage. And then it'll, I think it actually gives you the trail of different policies.
I don't want to reveal a single policy, but I'd like to know what you're talking about.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, thoughts? I'll take a motion to approve the second reading of the list of policies.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan. Anyone? Kyle? Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Take your mark. Motion approved, five zero. Okay, presentation of Board consent to advertise the 2024 budget. All right, Todd, let me go up. Go ahead.
So I prepared the PowerPoint, the binder that the Board has, has the breakdown by line item, the insurance, the salary, the supplies, all of that. So I'm not going to go through that in a board meeting. Obviously, it's something that's always interesting, we can make that happen. But this has been the PowerPoint since 2019. Just to remind those that are familiar with the old fund system, that how our funds are set up now. Usually, we had five funds, and the legislature decided to, instead of having them broken down in those particular ways, using a general fund concept, and the specific funds to break it down more into a, something that's more appropriate. So the education costs are specifically in the Education Fund, the operations costs are in the Operations Fund, debt service didn't change. This one date. So the budget calendar, assuming permission from tonight, then I will have the information posted to Gateway by Friday or before. That will allow us to have a public hearing on the budget on the 18th, and assuming no changes or issues, the Board can adopt that on the 23rd of October. The DLGF has a deadline of November 1st, and they are very strict about that, other than if it's on a weekend day. We don't have that. If I would have that anyway, they would make us adopt that previous year's budget probably. So that's not going to happen. I'm just trying to play the correct word, so we understand. This gives a background of some fund balances at the end of the previous year. This is the last year. We'll see transportation, the bus replacement fund, but a little landscape of how we've done in time. This page shows a little bit of our history, recent history with assessed valuation. We had quite the increase in 2023. And we'll let you show that. So hopefully, I figured their growth quotient was around 5%, 4% for winning, something like that this year. So we'll see how that affects things. We can get into the funds, Rainy Day fund, next, sorry. I'm not predicting anything at the moment in Rainy Day. Hopefully, we can leave that, add to that at some point in time, maybe, see how this next year goes. There's some encouraging things going on in the district. So education's next. The legislature, we're in the beginning, the first year of the two-year budget, and they front-loaded the increase. So I think that's going to affect us in a positive way. The basic grant. We've also got some interest right now in our TCU account. I think we're about 4.5% each month. We want the variable rate. That's been a good choice for us. So those are some factors that have increased our revenues in those, the top two items.
I think it's important to point out, as Todd just alluded to, they've front-loaded the basic grant. So we're going to see a larger increase this year, and then next year, those numbers are going to drop. So we need to make sure, as we're planning and going through negotiations, we have a two-year plan looking at those numbers.
Just to give an idea, I think first year percent was like 5%, and next year, around 5%, and next year's around 1%. So I have an weird way to do it, but it's my service. So expenditures on the next page. Basically, when I do, when I do these numbers, I can start revenue, and work backwards into the expenses. So most of our expenses in the top line, that's our elementary, middle school, high school supply line, or education line. So a lot of, mostly, a lot of our path expenses come out of that basically. So the transfers at the bottom of the page, I put in, that's about approximately 15% of the basic grant out of the revenues, but we never transfer that much. I just put that in there to be safe, or ask it. We can reduce that as the year goes on, or at the end of the year, if we need to be. So DLGF allows us to do that with additional appropriation process. Debt service, just trying to, you know, like I said, this is an estimate of what I have at the moment. So that number, our tax levies, that number's up. But we also, this is the last page. Right now, we have a little bit over. However, there's a 23 bond. I'm not sure we're big, we haven't got that far a big authority to tell us how that's going to view, you know, fit in the budget. So that'll obviously impact what the DLGF gives us, or we get from our levy. But we bet, we, the debt service fund stayed relatively consistent, like five years here. So next, the operations fund. Shows the transfer, which obviously, if we don't transfer that, it's going to affect our expenditures. But I also built that into the budget. So a couple of different areas. Revenues are projected to be up there as well. Mislands revenues up a little bit, but we started to dig here, so that adds into that, that revenue as well. Probably the only thing that really sticks out this year from last year is as S R 3 winds down, we're getting back to the tech, a lot of the technology things coming back, the software coming back into the budget, the operations fund, and that, you'll see that in the 2500 binder, the second one down. So I had to beef that up to make sure we covered a lot of software that we still have, and that doesn't feel pretty forced. And that's basically it. Oh, the bus, sorry, I missed the bus point. Buses that I can even mention, I feel, because the buses haven't really increased in price. First year, I think we spent, I personally have, the one thing that changed since then is LED lights and stop-arm cameras. But the first year, I actually paid $106, $1,000 for a bus, and now we're up to $155,000. So that's a, that's a big increase in the budget. Hopefully, that stabilizes, but it's factors in a lot of our controls, so.
Todd, where is it built in for, like, to offset the book rental, like the software? You know, the book, the fees that we already have on those contracts? And some of it's software, so I'm assuming that's in the software, final technology line?
Yeah, the, back on the education, or, I'm sorry, the operations fund, in that 2500, that would be where that, where that, I used to do that from. Obviously, it doesn't show that because it shows the whole grouping, which has, you know, all technologies, you know, payroll and everything has a technology. But I think, I think for software, I added, I didn't, didn't budget anything last year because I think we had extra money this year for, excuse me, for '23. For '24, I put $250,000 or $300,000 in software there.
So even like the hardbound books are in that line item?
No, that would just be anything software, Canvas, Harvey, Rule.
Right, okay.
Anything, I mean, there's, I can water them on if I have to, because he'll just read them off, but yeah.
No idea.
So Casey, part of your question, I think, and Todd, we need to walk them through, is out of Education Fund. And we know that in November-ish, we should be getting a reimbursement for per student. It goes along with our ADM, and then they will give us a one-time payment at that point in time to help offset, and we'll know a little bit better how far we are off our numbers.
Of course, I've seen confusing guidance, because it has been mentioned it will be in the Education Fund. It's also been mentioned that we'll still have the textbook rental fund. Not sure exactly which way they're going. I hope they keep it separate. It makes it easier to track and be proven with the funds that way. Sometimes they throw stuff all in one fund, and it's harder to track, it's harder to keep that money for you, so.
Aren't they supposed to do that for two years?
So we're going to track it, they've asked us to track it for two years, and then they will reevaluate during their next budget cycle, how close they are to offsetting that cost for school districts.
I got it. Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
So do you just want a motion on?
So I believe what Todd is asking for is Board approval to advertise the 2024 budget.
So does everybody understand kind of what that, new members, like, do you guys understand kind of what that, the flow is? Okay. Any questions or thoughts?
We would encourage you to go through those books, and if you have questions at the next study session and at the next board meeting, we'll try to walk you through any more questions or concerns that you may have, or if you want more detail in certain areas, we'll be glad to walk you through that.
I myself still be working on it at meeting with the Field Chair, but I'll be first to go through the table budget, which shot me, so. Any questions or anything you want to talk about, feel free?
Any comments or thoughts, questions from the general public? Okay, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Stephen, second.
Second.
Ethan. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Four zero. Motion approved. Next on the list is the approval of the DotCom SLP contract for '23, '24. Jen here?
She is not.
Okay.
So we are, we posted for another speech and language pathologist. We were not able to secure any applicants. I know that Jen did reach out to one person individually. We're in conversation, hoping that maybe next year we can land that person. Until then, based on our caseload, we do need to pick up an SLP for this year. We did do due diligence and track three companies to engage them. Dotcom have the best monetary value, but is a service to students as well. So we have shifted the caseload and what that looks like to make sure that those who need the most time and attention in their speech and language IAPs are making sure that we get those with person-to-person contact, those with minor SLP needs. We are using this SLP contract for those students.
And that annual contract cost was the 92,426, correct?
Not to exceed that.
Not to exceed that, correct. Any questions? Okay. Questions from the public?
Shannon, did you say, or Kathy, that is not to, not to exceed a specific amount?
Correct.
And that is?
The 92.
What, 92,800?
92,426.
Okay. Do you foresee it being that much?
We, we never know how many more students may enroll with that, but that, I, we don't anticipate that, or not at this time.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the, oops, wrong attachment, the claims. To approve the DotCom SLP contract for 2023 and '24.
I'll move to approve.
Stephen? Second by Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero. Okay, next we have the approval of the TAG grant policy.
So the TAG policy is the Teacher Appreciation Grant, and each year, we need to bring that to the Board for approval. I did reach out to Hope, and we both agreed that keeping that status quo seems to be the best for everybody, which means that they, teachers would need to meet the Indiana Code, the policy that the state outlines. There has to be a 25% differential between highly effective and effective teachers. If they have retired or moved to a different district, they're no longer eligible for the grant monies. They have to be here in the district. Trying to think, the, the other important part of this with approval of the TAG policy is the money, when it comes in, we get notice that the money has been sent to the school. I believe it's a 14-day turnaround time that we have to have it back to the employees, or back to those who qualify for the Teachers Appreciation Grant. So sometimes there is a board meeting, and we think that there is sometimes, or there is not. But by the approval of this policy, we would be following what the state outlines and releasing those funds within that timeframe. They typically come right around Thanksgiving time. Last year, they were a little bit late, and that had all of us a little nervous. And, but typically, it's right around the end of November when they release those to us.
Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
Sorry.
Kathy, ma'am?
Is that just like bonuses for the teachers that do well, or are they using it in their classrooms? I'm confused.
It's a grant from the state.
It's a grant from the state for a teacher that improves.
Not improves. On their evaluation, they have to be highly effective or effective. There has to be a 25% differential in the amount that is given to each teacher, but it is monies that the teachers receive.
For their personal use, because they've done an excellent job.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other thoughts? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the TAG grant policy.
So moved.
Second by Mark. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero. Okay, next we have to approve the old football score, scoreboard as surplus to be auctioned off.
So our new board is up, and we did offer the old scoreboard to the Junior Football League, the Your Life Football Youth, thank you, youth football. They didn't see a need or a use for it. So at that point in time, the recommendation is to auction this off. I think there's been some interest, some people have reached out and asked us about that, so.
Are you going to do this on the, online?
Yes, we would work with Scott to do that.
Cool. Scott's got the magic touch there.
It's proven to be effective for us.
They actually usually go well.
Yeah, they do. They do.
Larger exposure. Any thoughts, questions, or concerns about that? Any thoughts from the public? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Stephen, second.
Second.
By Kyle. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
And Mark. Motion approves, five zero. Next is the approval of the Riddle Parent-Teacher Conference on Wednesday, October 18th, from 3:30 to 6:30.
Mr. Bernacki, would you like to speak to that just briefly, please?
Yes, that's, after fall break, we wanted to have our parent-teacher conferences consecutively. So we're actually going Tuesday and Wednesday. So that's the reason for the Wednesday there. We didn't want to use a Monday, and we didn't want to use a Friday, so, but we wanted them back-to-back. So that's kind of what happened.
Out of days in the week.
Yes, out of days in the week, yep.
Saturday and Sunday weren't a consideration?
I didn't dare drop those.
Any thoughts, questions, concerns from the public? No, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Aye.
Motion by Mark, second by Ethan.
There we go.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero. Here we have the approval of the overnight field trip to the state soil judging by the FAA members on October 19th through October 21st.
So this, our FFA soil judging team has traditionally done very well, oftentimes making it to nationals. And this is just the culmination of all of the competitions. Justin Pearson does a really nice job with that. There's always supervision, and the students do learn even a bit from this. I, I, as long as I've been in this seat, they have done this field trip without any concerns or problems. But a lot of benefits, and sometimes trips out less for the kids, so.
Any thoughts, questions, comments from the public? No, I'll take a motion to approve the FAA field trip.
So, the FFA?
FFA, why FFA?
F A, F A.
Well, I was thinking of flying somewhere, sorry, national. A west, I just got stuck. FFA. Stephen moved.
Second.
Ethan, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Mark?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Okay, and then we have one more approval of an overnight field trip to the Okay, and then we have one more approval of an overnight field trip to the National FFA Convention by the FAA members, November first through the third.
So my understanding is with this, these are kids who qualify through various activities within the FAA, they have to earn points to be eligible to go. It is a culmination where they get to listen to guest speakers, keynote speakers, do their presentations, engage with other FAA members, make a lot of connections, and it's, it's a great experience for them, and it's a culmination event for those students.
Any comments? Public? If not, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Motion by Kyle.
Second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Okay, donations to the Rochester Community Schools for August twenty-two thirty-three. We had two hundred dollars donated to Columbia Elementary by an anonymous donor for shoes for students. We had three hundred dollars donated to Columbia Elementary for outside play equipment for the daycare by an anonymous donor. Anonymous. Really having a hard time talking. We had an unknown amount donated to Columbia Elementary, a large donation of school supplies by the Burton-Richland Center United Methodist Church. And we had a thousand dollars donated to the RHS FFA for miscellaneous needs by Doug and Gladys Blackburn. And once again, thank you very much for all of the donations by the community, it really is amazing to see that generosity. Anyone ever any comments about the donations? No, I'll take a motion to approve and accept the donations for August.
So move.
Moved by Stephen.
Second.
Second by Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Donation's approved, five to zero. Then we have the Personnel Report for August twenty-first, twenty-two thirty-three. Recommendations for Columbia Elementary, we have Patricia Camp, Instructional Assistant in Kindergarten, hourly rate twelve dollars. Hannah Smith, Instructional Assistant for Kindergarten, hourly rate twelve dollars. Riddle, Alexia Rude, Special Needs Instructional Assistant, hourly rate twelve fifty-nine. Rochester Middle School, Alexis McSherry, Shared Physician, RMS Student Council, stipend three hundred sixty-five dollars. Corporation Recommendations, Amanda Haslett, Case Conference Coordinator, Special Education, hourly rate fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Bethany Schreiber, Role of Mentor and Liaison for Students with Spanish and Native Language, two days per week, hourly rate twenty-two dollars. Bethany Schreiber, Continue Working as an Instructional Assistant, three days per week, hourly rate fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Jessica Sheringa, Work as After-School Helper at Columbia, hourly rate twelve dollars. Food Service Recommendations, Madison Castro, Transfer to Columbia Elementary Cafeteria, Pay Remains the Same. Annalise DeVois, Transfer to Riddle Elementary Cafeteria, Pay Remains the Same. Kathryn Lindsay, Transfer to Riddle Elementary Cafeteria, Pay Remains the Same. And Kathryn, Kathryn Lindsay, After-School Program at Columbia Elementary, Pay Remains the Same. Athletic Recommendations, Billy Medina, Volunteer Softball Coach for twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-four school year, Volunteer. Jason Coleman, Volunteer Softball Coach for twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-four school year, Volunteer. Bryce Abbott, RMS Volunteer Assistant Football Coach, Volunteer. Bryce Abbott, RMS Assistant Football Coach. Oh, under athletic resignations, Bryce Abbott, RMS Assistant Football Coach.
So he resigned from, he resigned his paid position, but would like to remain as a volunteer.
Gotcha. And then FMLA Alexis McSherry, August twenty-eighth, twenty-three through October second, twenty-two thirty-three. Any comments, questions, concerns? Public? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the Personnel Report.
So move.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Second by Kyle. All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Personnel Report approved, five zero. Okay, Mrs. Vance?
Mr. Schreiber, do you mind beginning by sharing successes and things you're working on and things we might?
Absolutely. Well, at the, with it being the beginning of the year, we don't have a lot of events scheduled, other than open houses and, and things like that, so. We had a very successful open house, a lot of parents showed up, really good turnout for that, the kids were absolutely ecstatic to get back into the building, and it was a fantastic event. Really, this first month for us is kind of helping to adapt and get the kids, I don't, I'll use the word trained, in a lot of our safety procedures and things around the building so that they can be safe, so we spend a lot of time doing things that are safety-focused. We did our fire drill, our first fire drill of the year. We were able to exit the building, we had everybody out of the building in under two and a half minutes, which for those kids, a lot of them made it the first time, that's a fantastic number. Sometimes we don't reach that till middle, middle of the year. To do that at the beginning of the year is, is a real, really good accomplishment for our students. We also had CPR and AED training for all of our staff, that's a really big, big deal for us, and we continuously train our staff or refresh train them. This training was hands-on, included getting the AED out, actually getting it up and running so that they can hear it and, and walk through all of that. We also had bus safety. This involves actually getting the kids on the bus, every kid in our building, except for our daycare kids and our pre-K kids. Pre-K kids have a adult on the bus with them at all times, so they, they help them get their seat belts and all that kind of stuff. But for our first grade and kindergarten, we went through, walked through bus safety, bus expectations, a lot of times these kids have never ridden a bus before, so it's a nice opportunity to get them on the bus, let them ask questions, show them all the safety features of the bus, and make sure they understand why the rules that we have on the bus are there for safety. We also spend a lot of time on playground safety. Our teachers take the kids out, walk through every piece of equipment, talk about safety, proper use of that, and our PE teacher also does the same in her class, takes the kids out and reiterates that, so the kids kind of get a double dose of playground safety. We completed dyslexia training, or I'm sorry, dyslexia screenings for all of our first and second grade students, which kind of goes into Riddle's area, but all of that has been completed. We will do the dyslexia screeners for our kindergarten, our kindergarten kids in September, towards the end of September, coming in and giving those kids the dyslexia screener at the very beginning of the year. Doesn't give us the data, an accurate picture of what we're trying to get with that dyslexia screening. We've also completed hearing screenings for all of our students. We've got that finished up last, last week, and the ladies did a great job of that. And I just want to say for the start of school with the first month, our building was in fantastic shape, transportation has been amazing, they are, are doing a fantastic job, probably the smoothest since I've been at Columbia in terms of transportation. And there's a lot of people involved in that, the bus drivers, the teachers, the front office, the parents, following the guidelines of transportation changes and things like that. We've had a very good start for that. Our cafeteria, I talked to Dina the other day, and she feels that it's the smoothest in the cafeteria that it's ever been, kids knowing how to get through the line, doing a good job of eating, and just in general, it's been very smooth. Not to get into the high school or middle or anybody else's, but I have three girls, one in all the other buildings, and they've already eaten more school lunches this year than they probably have in the last four or five, and I all you do is hear about how good the food is at the other buildings. They're good at Columbia too, but the kids are eating, eating school lunches and enjoying it, in fact, my oldest daughter was talking about some kind of a bowl you guys had today, and it was like. It was, she, she compared it, she compared it to, to one of these actual Chinese restaurants that we go to, I don't know what the Chinese restaurant's called, but it, she had a name for it. Pan Express, yeah, she's like, it's better than Pan Express. So, kudos to the maintenance, transportation, and the cafeteria staff in all buildings. I think that you guys have done a fantastic job. And just for the start of school, our staff has worked really hard to, to get us a great start, and, and I truly appreciate all that they've done. Upcoming things, we don't have a ton coming up, we have Picture Day this week on Thursday, and we will be conducting our first Alice Drill with our little kiddos in about two weeks, so that's kind of where we're at at Columbia right now.
Questions?
Things happening at Riddle, first I want to give a shout out to Columbia and Riddle teachers, some of the results from the I-Ready three are coming out, and as a corporation or as our third graders, we're at ninety-three and a half percent, which is, last year we were at eighty-seven, as a state this year, they were at eighty-two percent, so we're ten percent above the mark, and I know as a state they're shooting for ninety-five percent, I think by twenty-twenty-seven, so I just think the realignment or Title One, the curriculum that's been adopted and implemented by all our kindergarten, first, second, third grade teachers, all those things coming together, we're seeing the, the results of all that, and so I know my teachers are really ecstatic about those results, and I think everybody should be as well, so thank you to everybody, because that's a true team effort to, to get that going, so it's, it's, very proud of that. We've got our clubs going, Running Club, our Barkman Optimist Bunch, and Choir Club are all going, so thank you, Mrs. Walkman, for the Running Club, and Mrs. Weaver Choir, and Mrs. Coulter, and Mrs. Zion for our Junior Optimists. We have Picture Day on Thursday, so that's coming up, and we, as a corporation, we transitioned from NWEA, we're using iReady, and Megan McLaughlin's done a nice job of setting up some training for us, so we've got all our results, and now we're going to learn how to use those and make the proper adjustments, so looking forward to that. Any questions? All right, it's long. Riddle to Middle, we had ninety-five percent attendance for Riddle to Middle. It went very well. We appreciate parents, you know, send their kiddos to do that, they get to figure out how to do a lock, what their classroom schedule looks like, so that was a, a huge success. First day at school, we had PBIS, of course, the middle school would love to have fun, Kona Ice Dodge Ball Park. Huge, huge thank you to the Parks Department of the city for going to the park and spraying for bees and stuff like that, for Fulton County Sheriff's Department, and sending SROs over there to make sure that, you know, safety in the park is there, and that there was a watchful eye there, so we appreciate that partnership with all that. Hundred percent of our medical, emergency medical forms have been handed in. Fire drill we did on the first Friday back to school went very well, nice orderly fashion that the kids have been able to, to get into the, the way things go. School pictures were the first full week, and those are already done. We successfully gave our first iReady assessments, and are working through getting that data. We use that homeroom to build on what students know, using that individualized pathway that they have in iReady. That placed, that replaced NWA for us, and it is a lot more centered on the iLearn test because the people from iReady have something to do with the iLearn test, so it just made sense to, you know, switch over to that, and I think it will give us much more accurate feedback on the kiddos and expectations on what to see whenever the spring comes for that test. Back to school dance, last Friday was a hit, it was heavily attended. Kids had karaoke pizza, line dancing, tons of fun. Open house was last Wednesday, it was a huge success, over a hundred families came, many stayed the entire time, which was an hour and a half. We had a taco bar, cookie, punch, most of the food was almost gone. I know whenever eighth graders come through there, whether they're volleyball kiddos or football kiddos, we feed them. Yes, they're not technically in our building, but they're a part of our building, we had kiddos come that the parents didn't come because they're working, we fed them, so that was nice to see. Four County, they had a table set up there, helping make connections as well, as another partner for the district. Between fifth grade orientation, Riddle to Middle, parent meetings, and open house, RMS has seen over ninety percent of our parents and family in person. Fast Friday started last Friday, that's always fun. Parents got that caller on Thursday evening after school, and we filtered those phone calls on why they received it. So that all, you know, it's a great thing to help keep kids accountable and just, you know, make sure their grades are up and it works. We introduced our new NJHS members for seventh grade, and this week is Penny Wars, Dress-Up Days, go along with the high school, Columbia, and I think Riddle are also doing them, and on Friday, the Dump Tank. More to come, because it's Valley Week, and it's Bell Week, and we need it back. Is there anybody in this room that's at jeopardy of being in the Dump Tank? Yep, I am. Is there, is there anybody else in this room? I don't know, I don't know.
And I'm going to add pennies to a, to a bucket tomorrow morning. So anybody who can make it in the morning, feel free to drop your pennies off to me. Quarters are great, any coin, bills, because that's negative.
I may have a bucket out at the drop-off line. Flip on through.
We're going to have to boot.
Things coming up, data training for iReady for our teachers and admin, football's in full swing starting tomorrow, volleyball's in full swing starting tonight, cross-country, they all begin their seasons, and, you know, we're off to the races with that. September, we will be all about continuing to build on those relationships with the kiddos, learning how to utilize iReady to its fullest capabilities, learning and having fun while doing it. I can't say enough great things about the staff that are in the middle school, and how appreciative I, I am of them, that they come every day and they love on those kiddos, so thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'm going to echo what they've said, I feel like we've had probably the smoothest start to school that I can remember in a very long time. It's just been a really good start to the year. So, we have had our student class elections already, so it was just announced to class presidents, vice presidents, so on, that's all done through our student council, and we just had that this week. Our boys tennis team won the John Glenn Invite on Saturday, and our girls golf team set a new school record, and they just didn't set it, they smashed it. It was like a hundred and sixty before, and they finished at a hundred and fifty-three, so it was very exciting for them, and for the coaches as well. Big news at the high school, Mrs. Masterson has the snack cart rolling on Fridays, that's a big deal, I don't remember if it was Jana or Oscar who said it, but if you have not had a snack prepared by our culinary class, delivered by the life skills class on a Friday at one-thirty, you have not lived yet, because it is the best way to get through that last hour and a half on a Friday. It is wonderful. So we're thankful for Mrs. Masterson for doing that with our kids, and then that we get to see those life skills kids hand them out with Mrs. Heisman. We have Dress-Up Days this week, I hear there's a big football game on Friday. We have a lot going on to get prepared for that. We had all of our students that are doing dual credit get signed up today, we had an Ivy Tech representative at the school today, so all those doing dual credit through Ivy Tech were signed up today in those classes. What we have coming up, the auditions for the Fall Player this week, it's called Murder Mystery at the Murder Mystery. I believe that it's one of those like interactive plays, that if the audience chooses something, then it changes how things happen on the stage, so that's kind of what the kids were saying in the hallway, so I believe that it's going to be pretty fun. The jazz band and a few other band kids are going to be performing Saturday at the Arts Festival on the Courthouse lawn, they've been working hard at that, I'm excited to see them. Our Justin's rep will be here Wednesday, so the seniors are going to start picking out their senior stuff, and their senior year is underway. We have the FCA tailgate this Friday, along with that football game, and then in the next couple of weeks, we'll be planning for homecoming, and the FFA pork chop dinner, and everything that comes along with those. So again, very smooth start, we have an awesome staff, just like they all said, it's been a great start to the year. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything you guys do.
Directors here as well, if you want to hear from them.
Yeah, definitely.
Kevin, you want to share out transportation, please?
Echo off the building, buildings are excellent on getting the kids out. It was a little rocky the first start, but getting it down to the science. Kudos to my drivers, they adapted, everything changes every day. Without them, I'd be lost. I got a new driver in training right now, I'll be down at Safety at Rusheville. Hopefully get him licensed, lighten up some of the loads on the buses because they are at full capacity as of right now. Needing at least three more drivers to make the routes shorter. Kids will be on the bus for an hour and twenty minutes, roughly that's what they are right now. But the, the Riddle, it started out rocky, but we got down to the science now and dismissal, it's, they're in and out, gone. We, that's a little rocky road, but we got it figured out, Luke and I did. But the other matter is, you know, anybody who wants to come and drive or anything, we pay for training and I train them. So more drivers to marry here. That'd be, that's all I've got. Yeah, it's been a very, very smooth start. First day of school, the radio chatter was silent for the first day of school, very unheard of. But, but a very, very smooth start.
Thank you.
Doug, will you share out for me, please?
Well, first off, I want to thank all of the schools, principals, vice principals, everybody for being patient. Right now, we're a little bit understaffed. My building only has Don and I. Chris has been at the middle school for about a close to a month now. He's helping bridge a gap there and keeping them above water. And I would like to thank all my staff, you know, because they do an excellent job for me, for the corporation, for the principals and everybody in the school. We, this week, we're gearing up for the Valley game on Friday. So we've got a lot of things that we're trying to get the campus ready for. And then we're trying to finish cleanup of all the storm damage. And I would also like to thank Steve for coming, helping with the middle school tree. But we do have a couple more trees to cut up and get rid of. So we're still.
I got a chainsaw if you need somebody. You just have to get approval from Mrs. Vance because she won't let me bring my chainsaw out.
But I do appreciate everybody and all the help that you guys have given, given me, myself and my staff. So I want to thank you.
Within our food service department, we hosted the NISIC Annual Training Event, which had some of our vendors, whether it be food or equipment or technology come in. And I'm being told by Lisa Abel, who is the Assistant Director, that this was the biggest turnout from what they had in previous years. She was really very forward with saying she would like to have us host it again because it was such a great turnout and there's such support with the food service staff, helping as far as getting ready. I'm continually working on right now, direct certifications, free reduced forms and the annual financial report is coming up due. And our staff has done really well this year with integrating new items into their menus and getting them implemented so we could get some more kids in eating. So we've had a really, really good turnout. But thank you all for the support and the continued support because I'd like to host more events and get some more stuff into our corporation. It was nice for everybody to get to mingle and some of them that couldn't come before and some of them that were closer to our location because we've traveled sometimes up to two and a half hours to get to this in the past. But thank you all.
Thank you all of you. I know it's a smooth start for the year, it's nice hearing no reports, if that makes sense. It's like the bus chatter, you know, when it's, when it's all quiet, you're, you're either a little nervous or you're ecstatic. But it's obvious that everybody, you know, your leadership with your buildings, with the students, you know, I hear it from my own son, I hear it from his friends, you know how excited he is when he comes home, about the different activities and the different teachers and the new things. So thank you all for a wonderful start to the year. We'll hopefully clear it through. Did you have anything?
I don't, I, I just want to thank everybody. We've heard a lot about smooth starts, but leadership starts here in this room with the board members, but also the amount of work that goes on in the summer to launch that first day, that first week, that first month is tremendous. And I don't want that to go unnoticed here as well, that it doesn't just happen, it's a lot of work and a lot of working together. So I want to thank the team. That's all I have.
We have a couple of things for, well, first thing that came to mind during Luke's, Luke's update was, Jana and Luke, what, have you guys done some reevaluating on your commuter, the car pickup?
So adjustments we've made to that transportation since the beginning of the year. We open up our car gate now in the afternoon at two fifty-five and that allows the cars to get through and we get the numbers in and we still release the students at three o'clock. We've made adjustments to where we put our bus students. So they're in different rooms according to their bus and things like that. So we've made those adjustments and, and we, in the car line, I think we bought ourselves another five minutes or so. And as, working with Kevin, I think we've, the buses, we're able to get our bus kids out smoother as well. Yep.
I think it's important to take a little bit of data into this as well. There was data that was shared earlier and people were amazed by it, but when you, and Kevin, I'm going to lean on you a little bit. When you talk about the high school and the middle school, we're talking about a little over six hundred and eighty, almost seven hundred kids that are either walkers, parents pick them up, or they're bus riders. And we clear that bus lot in about thirteen minutes. And everybody's on their way to where they need to be. At each of the elementaries, we're talking about three hundred and twenty-some kids and we're able to clear those lots, car walker, or car riders, walkers, after-school, bus riders, everybody there in about fourteen minutes. So when you think about the magnitude of the data going through there, it, it's, it's, it's a lot of organization. We appreciate the parents' support at the beginning, it is, it is overwhelming. We want to work on building relationships, we want safe routes to school, safe routes back home. And, and that happens with patience and making sure that we're doing the right things and listening to feedback and making those adjustments.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Mark, did you have anything for us?
No, thank you for asking.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion to adjourn if there's no, to the public, I'm sorry, anyone in the public have anything else they would need to talk about? Okay. Motion to adjourn, everything?
So do. I'll do it, Ethan second.
Motion by Steven, second by Ethan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any on the table, feel free to stay. Thank you all. Thanks, Mark.